All right, I am Tim Skaggin, Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:34 on Monday, November 16th. We have just a little technical alignment here. I was going to hopefully make sure that we have two hosts in case somebody drops off. Can you tell Dave? You have to go to Participants. And then I'm currently Shasbury Town. I can fix that.
Yeah, you're not. Let me see here. All right, I'll make you a host too. It will only allow me to change the host to you.
Okay, I bought an extra license, an extra host license, so it could do that. So we need to figure that out. There's an action.
Okay.
I'll work on that. Okay, first off, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Okay, hearing none. I did not see minutes get circulated.
No, I did not get them out in the packet this weekend.
Okay, and I did not get warrants or Treasurers report. I'm hoping you have that.
Check your email. They should have been forwarded this afternoon. I'll do it right now again.
My email, just a few minutes.
Hold on a second.
Well, Dave does that, I'll move on to announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? We don't have anything about elections to announce. We've been doing that for a long time. I believe we still have openings on the DRB. We have a full set of five on the Planning Commission now, so if you are interested in serving on the Development Review Board, let us know. You can email me or Dave Kieran. And we will consider your application. All right, well, Davis hunting those down. Do we have any public comments? Come on, Jerry, help us out.
No, afraid I don't have anything tonight. Sorry to disappoint you.
Melanie, can you do your Treasurers report without the documents? Because I did not get them. Dave is trying to pull them out.
They just got sent to you, Tim.
These mid-month ones aren't terribly informative anyway. I'll just talk off the cuff. It's, as I said last time, it's all taxes all the time. We're pretty much done. I believe that the last ones to come through with postmark of the sixth have already happened, except for possible stragglers. So it's, I'm preparing the delinquent warrant for Mert probably later this week. And when I do that, I'll have a better sense of where we are versus a normal year. As of right now, it looks like it's going to be higher than normal, as would be expected with the economic downturn. As a percentage, it's probably going to be a little alarming, but as an absolute number, I'm not terribly worried about it. I'm talking to Dave about it. I mean, obviously, we have to send what we have to send to the schools. That amount doesn't, we don't get a break on that. All of that money has to go to the schools. So as I say, I'll have a better sense of that later. I got an unusual amount of pushback this year about the due date. Had a lot of really angry phone calls about.
I have lost Melanie's audio.
I can't. Yeah, I can't hear.
Yeah, would you please repeat that about the due date?
It's actually set at town meeting.
Yes.
And I recommend a date, the last seven years at least. It has been the Friday, Friday at 5:00 PM. The Friday before Veterans Day, but it's been the 10th.
Melanie?
Yes.
Try turning your video off because we're barely getting your audio right now, and I have a feeling it's a bandwidth issue.
Okay. Is that any better?
Yes, a lot better.
Okay, I just want, what I was talking about is the due date issue. In every town sets their own, ours has not been agreement with Bennington or North Bennington since five years ago, which was the last time the Friday before Veterans Day landed on the 10th. I hasten to add that 98% of people didn't have an issue with it. And so, so maybe the 2% are going to find something else that they're angry about if the date changes now. So I don't want to make too much of an issue out of it. But I do want to have it on your radar for town meeting. It should just be something that we know comes up then. And if we have an alternative town meeting situation this year, then that's something we're going to need to address. The other factors with the
Before you leave that, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I got the point there. You're suggesting we need to think about changing the date that taxes are due next year?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying the squeaky wheel was particularly squeaky this year. There were a lot of, a lot of, a lot of phone calls saying it's never been this date before, although it has. Actually. And there was, I got one call from a very irate gentleman who thought I should have worked until midnight on that day collecting taxes because it said the sixth on the bill. But anyway, I think 5:00 PM is a reasonable time to expect down the due date. But I mean, so some people are going to be angry no matter what. All I'm saying is it is something we need to address at town meeting, whatever form town meeting takes this year. That's all I'm saying.
When is Bennington and North Bennington? What are their dates compared to ours?
I believe that they have it set in stone as November 10th. Of course, that's not really set in stone because that's not when it's on a Saturday or a Sunday. Or if the holiday lands on the 10th, so so actually, one out of three days, one out of three years, it's not the date that it always is.
Yeah, right, okay, interesting.
Anyway, about delinquent taxes, this is sort of all I'm thinking about right now. I think a lot of people, just because of the pandemic, are not as conscious of what date it is today. I don't know what date it is. I don't know what day of the week it is. So I think a lot of people missed paying taxes this year just because it caught them by surprise. So I'm not, I'm not as worried about the absolute number as I might be otherwise. I think, I think Mert is taking in a lot of money this week. So anyway, that's what I have to say about delinquent taxes. Does anybody have any questions about that? Once I do the warrant, we'll have a real clear sense of where we are versus where we have been other years, the same point. If you were to look at the cash flow, all you would see is that it's all about taxes. And with the Reserve Funds, you would see a very lovely $5,000 gift that we got for for the new dog park, which I thought was wonderful. Somebody so excited about it, we've already gotten a donation. And, and I guess that's something that the town is going to be raising money for. So other people, I don't, I don't know whether you're soliciting them, but you've got this very lovely one anyway. So that's the only thing you would see on the reserve spreadsheet. If you had it. But you're not missing much. Any questions about anything for me?
No. Oh, thank you.
I think I'm going to go away then. Bye, guys.
Okay. I have a document with warrants in it. Let's see if I can share it. Nope, I can't share unless you give me permission, Dave.
Give you permission to share this documents?
Yeah, I think that's another thing you have to do in Participants.
Well, instead of me trying to figure out how to do this in Participants, I'm going to put it up on mine.
Yeah, or not. We don't always put it up. I can describe it here. What I have is check warrant number 16 in the amount of $44,105.39. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Second by Art. Major items here include $4,400 for Appalachia Salt, $7,000 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $1,700 to Bennington County Sheriff. There's also 500 to Bennington County Sheriff, $400 and $1,100 to Bennington Tire Corporation. I see $4,600 to Whoa. Pardon me, my screen just went blank. Oh. That was you sharing the document. Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, why don't you go through it? Because you're going to have to scroll it.
Okay, you were at 4620, which was Howard Fairfield for plow equipment. 1554, this was a listener error that led to a tax return. Let's see, 1140 to John Williamson. He's a local farmer for hay. Let's see. 2,000 to set up with Nimerick Land Record Portal, which is part of a grant, the $20,000 grant we received. 8,000 to TAM for the regular contract. And 1,656 for Wells Communication, which was fire department radio equipment. Actually, a pager system.
Dave, was that salt, is that a different salt company we've been using? I don't recognize that name.
We used Appalachia last year.
Okay, I just, it didn't sound right. That's okay.
And that's really everything on here. We're just.
Okay, any other discussion on check warrant number 16? All in favor of approving check warrant number 16, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed to approving check warrant number 16? Okay, then that warrant is approved by a vote of 5-0-0. That amount was $44,105.39. And next we have payroll, payroll warrant number nine.
They're moved.
Second. Amount 20 $23,810.75 moved by Tony, seconded by Art. Any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed to approving the payroll warrant? Okay, so payroll warrant number 29, the amount of, whoops. Two amounts on the screen there, Dave. Okay, I was looking at the other total. So the total amount is $23,182.18. That's only a couple of bucks different from what I said earlier. That is approved 5-0-0.
This is another check warrant. This is the election one.
Okay, check warrant was at 15?
1887 and 86 cents.
They're moved.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the election payroll?
Melanie did a great job. Super job.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Marlene, yeah, sorry, Melanie. Yeah. Thank you.
Marlene and both did heroic work here. We're going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, no more discussion. All in favor of approving this check warrant number 18, was it? Say aye.
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 Any opposed to check warrant number 15? So check warrant number 15 is approved 5-0-0. All right, is that, is that it for the warrants?
Yes, that's it for warrants.
Okay. All right, we're up to item eight, which is town meeting 2021. Dave, this is about the Australian ballot thing?
Yes.
Either one, I can, I'll introduce it. I'll let you take it. The state has passed a law allowing that because we are likely still going to be dealing with COVID in March, that towns may conduct town meeting by Australian ballot. The normal issues that come up, including the budget, can be decided by Australian ballot. And that decision, whether or not to do that, can be made by the Select Board. Now recall that this came up in our town last year where we were suggesting that the budget be approved by Australian ballot. There was some vocal opposition and we proposed at that time to put the question to the voters, which is the way this normally has to be decided, to move the budget from town meeting floor vote to an Australian ballot requires normally that the citizens vote to decide that. So that would normally happen, one year they would decide, we're going to do this, then the next year you would actually vote the budget by Australian ballot. This year, the legislature said the Select Board may, if they choose, make that decision to not hold, essentially not hold an in-person town meeting. And I think it's very likely that we could be in a situation where that's what we want to do. I did speak to a number of the people that expressed vocal opposition to this last year. And they still oppose the concept in principle, but they all agree that they would not fight this for safety reasons. So I think what we ought to do is put that out there as we just have done. Think about it and then come back at our next meeting at the beginning of December and either make that call or not. But I think it's, it's very likely that at the beginning of March 2021, we are not going to want to gather 100 people into the gymnasium at the school.
I assume this would just be a one-year a one-year of thing that would not be changing it permanently.
That's correct. This is, would be an emergency just this year. Probably the legislation says while there's a state of emergency, which we are under still.
Okay.
Would we run a hybrid town meeting the night before via Zoom?
That's something to consider, and that's another option we could do instead of putting it on Australian ballot.
Well, I'm thinking, can we do a hybrid where we would vote by Australian ballot the following day? But allow people the opportunity to talk about their issues at a virtual town meeting?
I think that would make a lot of sense to have a, essentially an informational hearing via Zoom and have the actual vote be by Australian ballot.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, yeah, there are a number of people that need to, you know, verbalize some issues that they want to bring other than town. Well, anyway, yeah.
Dave, anything to add here?
Well, just for the people in the audience, the reason this is coming up now is because we don't have until February to decide this. We have to go to publication for the warning in January, mid-January, have to get things to the printer. So that's why we're talking about now and giving time for feedback in November and December. Because the decision has to be made in the beginning of January, not later than that. And Tony, there is a mandatory informational, you still have to have an informational meeting of some type.
Right.
How we would function, because sometimes we have trouble with 10 people on this system. I've been on others where you can type in questions and a moderator reads them out. And I would suggest to the board to reach out to Tom Daley, who is the elected moderator, and see what his ideas on this are.
Good.
Okay, so I suggest we, we think about this for a couple of weeks and then make a decision in early December, or I guess we can wait until even, I guess, early January if we wanted to, Dave.
Yeah, by the first meeting in January, after that, I really have to get this whole thing compiled.
Yeah, I, well, so either between now and the beginning of December, we should decide. I'm, I'm fairly confident this is the way we're going to have to go. I just don't think we can do an in-person vote, but let's, let's think about it for at least two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, item nine. Art and I were talking, and this last election was was a big deal, and it was a big deal for all of us. It was especially a big deal for the people who were counting the votes. And Marlene Hall, our clerk, and Gina James, our assistant clerk, worked extra for weeks counting absentee ballots. They were on the job even before that worrying about how we were going to, you know, observe social distancing through in-person voting and put forward the idea that we moved the voting to the garage, which we did. And the, for all of the feared chaos, it came off without a hitch. And I really commend the job they did. We were thinking that we could provide them a bit of a stipend to express our appreciation for the job that they did. Art, are you in agreement?
I still am, yes, Tim.
Yeah, I was thinking $1,000 for the clerk and $750 for the assistant clerk to say, thanks for all the extra work and making sure that we didn't have any issues with this.
Are you looking for a motion, Tim?
Yes.
I make that motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
I just think the degree of professionalism at the Shasbury polling facility was absolutely great.
Well, and also, almost half of the eligible voters voted by mail. And all of that needed to be monitored and made sure that it was legal. It really was smooth, very, very smooth. I was very impressed.
Dave, where would we get the extra money for this?
Well, I can definitely find $79 or $50. It'll have to come out of something, obviously, because we're a tight year. But it can be there. We also, frankly, aside topic, we're up to over $30,000 in grants we've received to cover some of the election expenses, some of which that Marlene went out specifically a 5,000 one that she found herself through the Clerks Association, and we received that one also, so. There's funds for this, for this amount that there are funds for.
Okay, I agree with what they did. I just yeah, where money comes from, that's all.
Right.
Other discussion? All in favor of awarding the stipend to the clerk and assistant clerk? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that motion is agreed to by a vote of 5-0-0. Okay. That takes us to the CUD update. I put this on the agenda just because I haven't mentioned it in a while. I just wanted to let you know that we are still working on the issue of getting broadband to the people that, that don't have it. It's a long process and we have been active on a couple of fronts. We did get our grant from the state to do our feasibility study to see if Bennington County has, can sustain the economics of building out a network. And the initial report there is that it's going to be tough for us to go it alone. We are, we are unfortunately blessed with having about 75% of the people in Bennington County with, more like 85% in Bennington County overall with Comcast cable and, which is really the measure of having good internet or not. Getting to the remaining 15% scattered over the county is an expensive proposition. And so what has been, what we've been discussing is the possibility of moving forward in conjunction with Wyndham County. And we are in talks with the Wyndham County CUD all the time and have talked about a number of ways that this could happen. It could happen via a merger, merging the two CUDs into one. They could stay separate and we could just coordinate on how we do the build-out. And we've also talked about using our feasibility study, the Bennington County side feasibility study, which at this point says you really can't go forward on your own to look at a two-county solution and then proceed with a business plan. So one way that this might play out is that we, the two counties get together, decide we are, both of our economics are better if we work together. And then develop a two-county business plan and use that as a lever, as a tool in an RFP to attract, to attract an ISP to come work this area. And again, it might be as simple as the two CUDs picking the same ISP. So that's, that's where the big picture is at. One bit of news I got today from Department of Public Services that the cell phone coverage maps that we did, recall that the state did an effort to map cell phone coverage around the state in order to demonstrate to the FCC that the coverage maps that they were using for deciding who should get additional coverage were not good enough to make those decisions and unfortunately, the way Uh unfortunately, the the way the F C C handled that was just to throw all the coverage maps out. Uh rather than getting good coverage maps, but uh it did uh it did provide us with uh uh good coverage maps. A good overview across the state and uh Corey Chase at D P S. Who did the driving for most of it, uh loaned the equipment to to Shastbury and we drove all of our roads. And all of that data just as of yesterday got moved into the state system. So there's an updated link uh on our website, if you go there and look for uh internet info. Uh it now takes you to a state database where you can zoom in and uh scroll around and see. What uh cellphone carrier is best in your neighborhood, in your front yard, uh down the street and uh. That information would be helpful if you're trying to decide what which cellphone to pick. Previously, we just had uh PDFs of that data, but this is a lot more uh usable, interactive format. Any questions about what's going on with the? All right, Dave, D P W report.
Okay, and I just on a side, Tim, there's uh two pieces of mail for the C U D that are uh in the box for you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh kind of a brief uh D P W report today, uh brush cutting is continuing on Trumbull Hill Road. Uh there's a culvert headwall fix on Leclerc due to a washout. Uh that may require the road to be closed, they're not sure yet, we'll post that if that has to be done. Uh gravel's being added to some sections of the road in the Hidden Valley. Uh as weather permits this week, uh they're also clearing brush and trees around the hollow hideaway in the culvert. And have the replacement project next spring. And uh getting plow equipment ready because that time is is coming soon. And we also have the uh garage, old garage, we began dismantling that today. That should go fairly quickly, I'm I'm told, I've had to see it, you know, but uh. So there, they started off taking parts of it off today and parts of the interior out, uh dumpsters arrived, so. It's underway and uh did you recall, we actually sold that, we're making five thousand on. Demoing and taking away the building, so it's it's kind of a good deal for us. That's kind of it for roads and it's kind of brief today, but uh oh, we can give you an update on international. The truck we ordered last year and the lawsuit, uh we did settle it that uh. Uh that we're getting credit for the purchase of a new truck, nine thousand dollars. Uh thank the lorries for working with me to. Smooth out some of the bumps in that, there was some question about the uh the truck being eligible for it, but uh we took care of that and. Unfortunately, the plow company again is the one delaying it, Viking uh. Uh so we won't be getting it till what looks like January now, so it was due at the beginning of this month and now it's back to January, so. Uh hopefully, we'll get it and get it in service this winter, we'll have to see.
And did you find out or did you ever uh pick up on how much we saved by having a solid shed? Or putting the salt in sand?
No, I didn't really get to that, we were under budget last year and we still have uh quite a bit of salt, really. So I'll have to work that up where you can, I didn't get to that, sorry.
Yeah, cuz I I you probably. Just ballpark top of my head, I would guess you probably cut the salt on that by about a third or between a third and a half.
Yeah, we certainly lost a lot in the backyard when we were doing it back there.
Yeah.
Mixing it with the size sand, so. Uh keeping and keeping a roof over this is far more cost effective.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Dave, do you want to comment on the contingency plan in case uh some of our drivers get COVID or is that something you gotta work out first?
Well, we are working on that, uh we we talked about at the beginning of this, now that it looks like we're into. Uh potentially deeper waters with COVID, uh we have a contingency plan that we can uh replace. Up to a hundred percent of our D P W staff uh if needed during the winter. On many days, we've operated on five instead of six routes due to illness, trucks breaking, things like that. We figure we can actually get down to four routes if we if we have such a problem of illness or people have to be quarantined. Uh but we want contingencies from there, which will be local contractors and local people who are qualified. And who have offered to uh drive one of the trucks. So uh we're working that out and I have Mike updating the final plan. Uh because we need to be ready, you know, it's close, close shop and we need to be ready for potentially all sick, six being down, so. Uh we will be ready for that.
Thank you.
Anything else about uh the roads or the Department of Public Works? All right, item twelve, community appropriations.
Okay, just wanna review this, that uh the notifications have gone out to the people who applied last year and people who contacted me. Uh actually, one person contacted me for a new group this year. Uh I'll be scheduling new applicants and from the motion at the last meeting, any applicant requesting more money for this year. I'll be scheduling them on the December seventh and December twenty-first meetings. Uh I had four emails I used, bounced back, so I'll be contacting those, reaching out to them this Wednesday. Those are all long-term ones, so someone must have left or changed their name or something, so I'll get in touch with them. But I'll keep you posted, the first ones will be on the seventh. Uh so far, I only have one that needs an appointment and that's the new person, the new group, and they'll be on the twenty-first. But that is in the works and uh hopefully, it won't be much more than it was last year. Any questions on the appropriations, that's all I really have, just wanna bring you up to date on it.
All right, and that takes us to budget discussion.
Okay, this is also just a preliminary, I just wanna get this uh scheduled out, we're looking for a uh very, very. Low budget next year, um planning a number of uh cuts and everything I believe is on the table from pay freezes. On up, I think we're gonna have a difficult, the state's gonna have a difficult year. Uh and uh we have to be ready to uh firm our finances appropriately. Uh I would like to ask that, we need another meeting this month just to pay bills. Uh so I'm suggesting November thirtieth for a meeting and have that as the first budget meeting. And then we can go into this in some detail. So I'd like to send out, I've been working on the budget and different things, uh proposals to uh to change it around. We I have met with the fire department, cemetery, rec committee. The listers and pretty much uh we're we're ready to go with it, there are gonna be changes, uh gonna ask for a new reserve fund this year. And speaking with uh Joe Vatican, the fire chief, uh the uh the Scott packs they use, the air packs they use. Uh many of them are hitting twenty years old, we have to start replacing them. Uh this was done once before on a loan, which uh. It isn't really the best way to do it, because you're just spending money on fees and interest and everything else, we start saving for these, Joe and his. Captains came up with a plan of replacement that would require uh just a reserve fund to start replacing them on a rotating basis, which I think is a better way of doing it than. Uh all for one, so that's one of the increases which will offset with some changes and other things. But that's uh, you know, there's, you have to have them. It's a matter of safety and I think the firemen's safety, if we're gonna ask them to go volunteers to go to a burning building, we should have the best equipment we can for them. Uh the state is also imposing a communications fee on us. Uh you pay twenty-five percent the first year for your, for the nine-one-one service, this is the dispatch service for the fire department. It'll be about fifteen hundred dollars next year, in twenty-two, and it'll go to close to nine thousand uh within four years, so. Uh six thousand, sorry, not nine thousand, six thousand, uh within within three years, four years, so. Uh we have to start paying for that, we're looking for alternative dispatching uh. And everybody's being hit with this, all the towns got these notices a few weeks ago and uh. To me, it seems like we're paying for the dispatching service in your taxes anyway to the state and now we're being charged. For the services that, you know, we're paying through in our property taxes and income taxes. But uh that's a battle someone else will have to take up, we have to fund it for now. And there's a lot of other little changes we'll we'll make to uh make this. As a tighter budget as we can going forward into next year. But we can set up the first date, then we would have the thirtieth, the seventh and the twenty-first. To uh go back and forth on the budget and wrap it up, so we can do that.
So uh when uh somebody calls nine-one-one and says my house is on fire. The dispatchers call our fire department. And uh we scramble to do that, and so you're saying now the state has decided that for that service of calling our fire department, we're gonna have to pay?
Yeah, the P S A P is uh in Westminster now, they, the state has been combining the P S A Ps. And all nine-one-one calls from this region go to Westminster. Except for the banking, which runs their own dispatch and Manchester has a dispatch for themselves also, so. Just to me, I, you know, it's hard to explain why they need this, but they've sent around a letter to everybody who uses the state police network. That these fees will start being charged next year, twenty-five percent of the total the first year in four years, working up to a hundred percent. And our fire department's total based on call volume comes to fifteen hundred dollars the first year. And then going up to six, seven thousand in the fourth year, depending on how it varies over those four years. Joe wants to look into a couple of things, but. I said, there's really, it's kind of puzzling to me because we do pay for this dispatch center through our other taxes. And now we have to pay a fee. It's like the state imposing the stormwater projects on us and then charging us a fee for the privilege of having them imposed on us. So, so.
Well, it seems kind of crummy to me.
Yeah, what's it, what's the possibility of 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 hiring Bennington or talking with Bennington?
Uh Joe and his 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 department are investigating their options and uh I'll let Joe present uh his information on this uh. Hopefully, on the March thirtieth meeting, I'll see if, March thirtieth, November thirtieth meeting, I'll see if he can come in for that one. Because Joe's department will be the biggest uh uh changes this year, this is uh paging systems, bunker gear. Uh this fee and uh replacing all the air packs, so that that's uh the biggest items actually this year.
Are are you saying that when we call nine-one-one, we don't get, we don't get in touch with Bennington, it goes to someplace else because we're in Shastbury?
And then the 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 critical part for them too is, and I, again, this is for Joe to talk about. Because when they're on the scene, they're still communicating with with the people in in, I think it's Westminster. So, you know, he he knows better how, I know how they work up around here, but I'm not sure how they work with Shastbury and Bank and. He's exploring it, so uh I'll let him answer these questions.
It it sounds like it's something we need to talk to our legislators about also.
Yeah, like I said, I'm a little miffed at this fee, I I don't know, it's gonna raise a lot of money for the state, that's for sure.
Yeah, somebody slipped that in.
Yeah, and like I said, it's the same, the stormwater management program, I mean, it's okay to do, but then you're charging us.
Yeah.
Twenty-three hundred dollars a year now for the privilege of doing it.
Yeah, yeah, they hook you, they hook you and then they, yeah, put the fee on it, yeah, yeah.
And of course, it's mandatory, so there's nothing you can do about it.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But Joe will have a lot more information on that, uh I'll try and have him on the thirtieth, thirtieth or the seventh. Because that's one of the bigger uh projects going on. Let's see, so if we can uh if the thirtieth is all right, I'll make sure that's scheduled and we'll make sure I can have line people up.
Thirtieth is good for me.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Time.
That was good.
Yeah.
Maybe six-thirty, just a regular meeting time, special meeting at six-thirty?
Yeah. All right, if you're uh, if that's it on the budget discussion, I'll uh kick it back to you for other business.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh just I wanna bring you up to date on a couple of things going on, the water main project. Uh we're at the stage for the construction bond, this was all approved months ago, uh everything takes a while, we're. Uh Melanie and I have a Zoom conference with the Vermont Bond Bank. That is just the way these things are financed and this will be financing for the construction planning. Uh we've just finished the preliminary planning stages, which will help provide the paperwork so that we could get into the bond bank for construction planning now. There'll be a sixty-five thousand dollar loan. Which is how these are all done at very low rates, that'll be rolled in, it's a water, it'll only be affecting the water customers as we've talked before. And uh. I'll have more details in the paperwork design probably at the second December meeting. Uh and then we'll move forward with the design and that'll take the bulk of next year and then we'll, we will be into. The actual bidding for construction of the first section, which will take place in twenty-two or early twenty-three.
Vermont still maintained its double A plus bond rating score, but. Don't have a very good future.
Well, for water systems. If, when we build, we'll probably not be through the bond bank, we'll probably be through a federal program or or the drinking. I forget the acronym, there's a, there's a special drinking water fund in the state too, so it'll probably be one of these. The bond bank is doing the preliminary construction right now of loans.
Okay.
It's all part of what we have been talk, talking about before, I just wanna let you know that we're we're speaking with the bond bank to help them prepare the paperwork and we'll. Bring that back for you.
Okay, thank you.
And then uh just a update on the different election grants, we have the local government. Emergency response grant, we got thirty-seven hundred dollars for that. Uh the records restoration grant, we received twenty thousand and a civic action plus grant, we received five thousand dollars. So that'll go a long way to defraying uh many of the extra election costs we had this year. This is a substantial amount of uh payroll over what was planned, especially for Gina, well, only for Gina, really. Uh cuz she worked a lot of extra hours trying to get this together, we had to buy a lot of equipment uh for this. Uh Moni's computer started giving her fits in the middle of this, so. Um but we received a lot of grants and we're also getting all the towns' records, the last forty years of property records digitized, so. As part of COVID relief, so uh that's all in process and that's making up for a lot of our extra expenses here. Which which is good, it's good to get that made up this year, especially this year. Uh that's all I have on that, just wanted to mention that and I think that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Uh other business.
Uh Terry, but I just wanted to give you an update, I called uh. Brown's uh equipment there and uh they were supposed to give me another price at another. Upgraded tractor and they hadn't got back to me, so I called him this morning. And he's gonna check on it with his suppliers and two other. Dealers uh never got back to me at all, so and I I they all understand that we're waiting for that grant. So uh I just wanted to let everybody know where that stood. That's all I got.
Did you and Mike get a chance to look at that Massey Ferguson?
No, we didn't get back up there.
Okay.
Other business. All right, any final comments from the public? Jerry, you're muted.
You're muted.
Okay, just unmuted me. I I know Melanie's left the the meeting, but I just wanted to compliment her, I thought the taxes were handled really well. I'm one of those people who used to bring my taxes there and have her stamp it, cuz I just like the personal satisfaction. But the alternative she proposed worked out really well and everything was processed really quickly, so. I think people who complained about the date. I think people who complained about the date, I don't understand because the taxes were mailed out in plenty of time. And we were all given plenty of notice of when that was due, so I can't quite understand why anybody would screaming at her on the phone about that. But I just want you to know, I thought she did a really great job. The other thing is I just wanted to say, I think the idea of a virtual town meeting the night before, just for people to either air any issues or get some things. Clarified maybe would probably be a good idea, but the idea that you'd have the Australian, I think that's realistic. I don't see. COVID being under total control by March and that's it.
All right, thank you, and we will pass those compliments on to to Melanie. I'm sure she'll appreciate that. Okay, reviewing action items. I'm gonna try to figure out why we can't. I have two hosts in the meeting, even though we're paying for it. Let's see, Dave is going to schedule the community appropriations starting in December, I believe he said. We're going to schedule a budget meeting on the thirtieth at six thirty. Joe Vatican is looking into options on the the dispatch issue. And then sometime between now and. January, likely at our next meeting, we'll decide what to do about town meeting and what kind of meeting to hold. Anything else that we promised to do that I missed? Okay, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Both. Second.
Second by Art. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed to adjourning? All right, we stand adjourned.